Okay, good night, everybody. This is May 21st, 2018. It is 5:30 PM. We're in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Meeting number ten is now called to order. Would you all please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, roll call, please.
Phillips?
Aye, here.
McCambo?
Aye, here.
Rinker?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Okay, we have a proclamation, people.
I have a proclamation I'm excited to read. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, enhancing districts and communities, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas Burlington has an abundance of historic treasures, including national and local registered properties, and the Burlington Historic Preservation Commission promotes the preservation of historic landmarks and historic districts within the city of Burlington. And whereas this place matters, love that theme, that's the theme for National Historic Preservation Month 2018, co-sponsored by the City of Burlington Historic Preservation Commission and the National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, we, the City of Burlington, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Historic Preservation Month. In the city of Burlington, and we call upon the people of Burlington to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance, signed and sealed this 21st day of May, 2018. Shane A. McCambo.
Just very briefly. Steve Frevert, 1717 South Main, Chair of the city's Historic Preservation Commission. Typically, I come here in May and give a report of the past year's activities for the commission. I'm not going to take the time to do that tonight, but I am going to say that we are diligent working on completing a design guideline handbook for Heritage Hill. It's something we've had underway for a while, working with a certified local government grant and consultants putting that together. So, we hope very soon to have that released, and we'll have some kind of public information session when that's ready. So, thank you for this recognition, and as I remind the council every year, it's not good because it's old, it's old because it's good.
Love it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda tonight, we have the consent agenda. All matters listed under Item 1, consent agenda having been discussed are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent, we have the usual finances and miscellaneous minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer, liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have six resolutions. First is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. The second is a resolution approving final acceptance and final payment for the 2018 Eighth Street Emergency Sewer Repair. The third is a resolution approving final acceptance and final payment for the Parkview Care Facility asbestos abatement and demolition project. The fourth is a resolution approving professional service agreement with Veenstra and Kim for construction inspection. The fifth is a resolution approving 28E agreement for mutual aid fire protection between the City of Burlington, Iowa and the Bigsville Fire Protection District, Illinois. The sixth is a resolution amending fees for building and construction permits for the City of Burlington, Iowa. We also have three hearings set for June 4th. The first is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 Patterson Street Erosion Repair Project. The second is consideration of plans and specs for 2018 Public Works Roof Replacement Project. And the third is consideration of plans and specs for the 2018 1106 Washington Street Drainage Improvements. And we also have two appointments, Mayor Proton.
We have, for the Airport Authority, Elizabeth Van Black Sally. And then also for Low-Rent Housing Agency, we have Edward Prill.
Thank you. If anybody would like to have any of these items removed from the consent? Yes, sir?
Dwight Maltz, 231 South...
Can I have you come?
Yes. Dwight Maltz, 231 South Third, and I'd like to address the council in regard to the Airport Commission appointment.
Okay.
Is that appropriate to do that now, or?
No, we'll be coming back to that. Thank you, sir. Okay, any other items from the audience? I see none. Can I get a motion, please?
Your Honor, I have a motion to approve all listed under item, Consent Item I, Consent Agenda, with the exception of Airport Authority appointment.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson? Aye.
Okay. We're going to try to roll downhill tonight, but I do want to make sure that I read this thank you card. It was given to me a couple of weeks ago from the Midwest Magic. It says, "Thank you for your donation from the Midwest Magic Team Captain and Coach, Terry Cokely, Mike Fuer, Sarah Fuer, and Brett Mitchell." And, Mike and team, if you guys are watching, thank you for taking the time to send out this card. It's appreciated. I'll be hanging it up downstairs in the chambers. Okay. Next, we have some properties for sale. This is time set for hearing for consideration of sale of property locally known as 232 South Sixth Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions, publications have been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law.
This property is located on South Sixth Street, just south of Division Street and Edna Street. It is one city acquired. It was in 20, end of November 2017 through the owner. It was a building that had been placeted, abandoned, unsafe, needed quite a bit of work. We have had a offer on the property from Thomas and Cynthia Fossom from Newcastle, California. There are some conditions for sale of the property. Go through those here. Effective items need to be repaired as needed. Licensed plumber and electrician shall inspect and sign off that such items in the property meet or are brought up to code. Sidewalks and parking shall meet code, current code standards as necessary. All permits shall be received and codes met for applicable work and occupancy of the home. Purchasers shall maintain property and yard and hold insurance on the property until approvals, upon approval of sale by the council. Work shall be initiated within 60 days and completed within 180 days of approval by the council, with an extension of 180 days may be granted with continued progress on the property. Failure to meet timeframes may result in forfeiture of sale and purchase with resale by the city. This is a home built in 1871, a two-story brick home, four-bedroom, one-bath, on an 80 by 117-foot lot. There's the home and then a lot, selling those as one property. Lot of clean-out and upgrades needed on the property, including porches, decks, roof, other surfaces. But anyone interested does have to follow and meet those requirements as well, so.
Okay. All right, we're going to open up this auction process for the property of 232 South Sixth Street. This is going to make a lovely home, so. We have our first bid, $500, from Thomas and Cynthia Fossom, Newcastle, California. Let's let the bidding begin. Do we have any other bids?
Woo! All right. Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of property locally known as 232 South Sixth, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second. Thank you, sir.
Need a motion to amend Exhibit C.
Oh, I do need a motion to amend it even though, okay.
Yeah, because it's blank right now.
Okay. Your Honor, I have a motion to amend Exhibit C to read, all screwed up, sale of property to Thomas and Cynthia Fossom, Newcastle, California, for the amount of $500.
Second.
All right, I got two seconds. We're doing good, you guys. We're going to do this. Kathleen.
Okay, this is on the motion to amend. Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
You voted.
Okay. I'd like to say this is going to make a lovely home and whatnot, so bless you. You like that whatnot? Okay, next we have a hearing for consideration of a sale of property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. Publication has been made by the Hawkeyes prescribed by law. Mr. Tisland?
Similar conditions of the previous property. This is located on Gunnison between Division and Smith Street. This house does, again, require rehab, meeting all current codes, require sign off by plumber and electrician that meets current code standards. Sidewalks and parking areas shall be improved as necessary to meet code standards as well. All permits received. Purchasers shall maintain the property and yard and hold insurance until, upon approval of sale by the council. Work started within 60 days and completed within 180 days with an additional 180-day extension, provided progress has continued to be made. This one previously came to council in 2016, in October 2016, and unfortunately did not follow through with the timeframes, exceeded six months beyond the additional 180-day timeframe, so it was well in advance of that. And by required as per the conditions of the sale, does come back through the process. So, we did have some interest in the property, expected a bid on it, had not received a bid to date, but did have some that state today did have interest in it. So, if we do not receive a bid today, we would continue to market it and bring that back at a future meeting.
Okay, sounds good. We're going to open this auction up. This is property 209 South Gunnison Street. It is a vacant house. We're looking for a minimum bid of $500. This is going to make somebody a lovely home. And, little kid, you could bid on it if you know where your mother keeps your checkbook. Do I have an opening bid of $500 tonight? Do we make, can you enlarge that picture a little bit? Maybe they can't see it that good. Look at that.
It's cute.
Home built in 1900, question mark. It's one-and-a-half-story brick, two bedrooms, one full bathroom, 45 by 156-foot lot. Tell you what, that's going to make a lot of memories.
Pretty sure it's not a one-and-a-half-story brick, just looking at the picture.
I appreciate you bringing that up. Pay attention to detail. No bids on this property tonight? I'll tell you what, you're really missing out. No bids going once, going twice? Becky Anderson? Your daughter gave you an amen on that, no. Okay. Okay, well, we're going to continue to market this, so we'll be coming back for those that maybe had some interest. Drive by, take a look at it. It's going to make some wonderful memories, so.
We just need, no votes on it, then? No votes to sell it?
So, we're just going to close it.
I would close the hearing, and I would still, since the resolution, I would just vote it down.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion to close?
Second.
Moved in second by all three of you. Kathleen.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson? Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving the sale of the property locally known as 209 South Gunnison Street, City of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions.
Second.
Let's vote it down. Kathleen?
Phillips?
No.
Graham Murray?
No.
McCambo?
No.
Rinker?
No.
Wilson?
No.
Okay, the no's have it, but we'll be back looking for a yes. Thank you, guys, for your participation in that. Next, we have consideration of an ordinance repealing Chapter 122 peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants, and creating a new Chapter 122, peddlers, solicitors, mobile food vendors, and transient merchants. Give a second.
Second. Did you say I need a second? I'm sorry. It's just a...
Yeah, I did, I...
I'll give you one.
I appreciate it. I appreciate the backup, my friend.
Anytime.
Okay, Mr. Tisland?
This code section is, I guess, being repealed and adding a new section, very similar to what was there before. The primary change is adding the mobile food vendors. We've had quite a few requests for that in the last couple of years, and they've fallen under peddlers, but not specifically defined in our code as mobile food vendors, so we wanted to make that change so that we're all under the same understanding of what qualifies as a mobile food vendor and what their requirements are under our code. So, most of the code section did not change. The only sections that were added are involved in the ordinance, and that primarily references what a mobile food vendor is defined as, and then where they fall within our code. One difference between other requirements is they get an annual permit, and then for each location, they submit a new location map for each of those locations that they're seeking. But they do not have to submit a full application every time they're looking to do a new location, as long as they have that one application on file at the beginning of the year, they can just submit maps going forward. So, we have some that do one-day events in a parking lot on Roosevelt one weekend, and then maybe on Mount Pleasant the following weekend, and they have to submit the full app, right now they submit the full application every time. So, this clears up some paperwork for staff and for the applicants, reducing some of that time, but still going through the process of notifying where the location is and getting sign off on that.
Any questions, concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Good.
None here.
Your Honor, I have a motion to close.
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson? Aye.
Your Honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance repealing Chapter 122, peddlers, solicitors, and transient merchants, and creating a new Chapter 122, peddlers, solicitors, and mobile food vendors, and transient merchants.
So, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson? Aye.
All right. Next, we have consideration of a fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget amendment number one. Stephanie Stucker.
Hello. In your packet was the budget amendment that we published in the Hawkeye on May 9th, as required. I'll just go through some of the different increases we're having in revenues and expenses, and if anybody has any questions, just let me know. Revenues were increasing approximately 1.1 million. 300,000 of that is the SAFER grant. We hadn't received the grant when we did the original budget. We're increasing ambulance revenues by 100,000, bond proceeds 200,000. And then, we also increase our transfers, and transfers are just, you know, transferring money from one account to another. It's not additional expenditures, it's just a transfer between funds. So, on the expenditure side, we're increasing public safety for the fire SAFER grant, the expenses we're increasing there. Also, on the police side, just 164,000 for building expenses, some overtime, and we had a vehicle that needed to be replaced. Again, we got insurance proceeds, but we'll have the expenditure on that side. For public works, we've got a little bit more expenses in the building out at the public works than the depot. Expenses are a little bit higher than we originally budgeted. In general government, we're doing some remodeling of the bathrooms here, and insurance was a bit higher than what we originally budgeted. Under the debt service function, we're increasing 200,000 for the bond fees. Culture and rec, we're increasing that, 155,000. We've had a little more expenses in forestry and parks, and then most of that is our trust accounts, where that's money that's given to us. We have to hold it specifically for a purpose. A lot of times, we don't know when the expenditures will be, so we just estimate it, and then as the year goes through, we will increase them based on, you know, how much cash they have on hand and what we think they're going to expend by June 30th. All the other expenses are under the business type, a lot of them under sewer. We had some sewer consulting, we had the plant line break, and the sewer separation increases there. Almost all the sewer expenditures that are higher than originally budgeted are just going to be paid with cash on hand, so we don't need, it's coming out our reserves that we already had built up in the sewer fund. So, workers' comp, pension was higher than we had budgeted, and self-insurance, and then we had some, parking was a little bit higher. We've got a lot of activity going on in the parking fund with the new signage, so we've increased that. So, does anybody have any questions on those?
I think we're good. Thank you, Steph. Any questions or concerns from the audience? Okay.
I have a motion to close.
Second. Second. Kathleen? Let's go.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson? Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget amendment number one.
Let's vote. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson? Aye.
Okay. Ordinances. Number one.
Your Honor, I have a motion for the preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance creating Chapter 163A, junk vehicles of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Burlington, Iowa.
Mr. Tisland?
This section applies to vehicles on private property. Currently, this is handled under our Environmental Nuisance Code, Chapter 163, but there isn't a lot of definition or clear, clearly laid-out abatement process, so by having this new section of Code 163A, it better lays out the process specifically for junk vehicles as far as notification, what qualifies as a junk, abandoned, or obsolete vehicle, and what notification of the property owner or owner of the vehicle is necessary. So, this hopefully better lays out the process for staff and for individuals with vehicles on what's allowed and what's required and what that notice timeframe is. But again, this is not a new section of code, other than it's being pulled out of our existing section, just to better clarify what the process is.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none? All right, Leon hasn't budged. Yes. I mean, how you doing, Leon? Counsel?
I didn't see anything wrong with it. Been through it a couple of times.
Okay, well, let's vote on this, then. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambo?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson? Aye.
Okay, well done. Number two.
Your Honor, I have a motion for the final adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 163, environmental nuisances of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Burlington, Iowa.
Mr. Tisland?
No changes from the previous reading. Again, this is an update of our code, based on review by staff, looking at what other communities do, and also by our attorneys, to make sure we're following proper standards and laws as defined within our code, and the ability to address nuisances in a timely manner and efficient manner. So, a lot of the changes were made based on recommendations for our attorney to make sure proper language is within the code, and then looking at what other methods can we utilize for abating nuisances and notification. The primary one being the notice by publication, which still requires a placard, as we do typically right now, that generally will not change what our current process is for tall grass, junk, and garbage and debris, such as that. So, hopefully individuals won't see a big change there, but by our code, this will allow us to be doing things properly. And then, I guess, better defining what abatement is, what the remedies are for failure to abate with municipal infractions and other items within the code. So, if there's any specific questions, we've covered this quite a bit, I can try and answer those as well.
I'll deal with the audience first. Any questions or concerns from the audience? I didn't call your name yet, Leon. I just did now.
Leon Shahean, 1821 Mount Pleasant Street. I guess I'm still confused on the method of service here, depending on what you're talking about. You may or you may not receive notice by certified mail. I just think it's best, certified mail certainly isn't cheap, but it's, I just think, for all the other money that the city spends, you could at least pay postage to notify somebody. There's been enough instances under the items, and I'm looking at 163.10, that they really should get certified mail, in all cases. And then, the only other comment, believe it or not, is a thank you, going back in the pages here. Basically, under number 11, early on, you made normal garden practices legal finally, as far as compost and grass clippings. I appreciate it, since I am a gardener.
You're welcome.
Yes, you are. Mr. Tisland? On the, what was the purpose of, was that just for savings on the certified mail?
Well, partly it's savings in staff time, waiting to deliver the certified mail and receiving that back. It's $3.45 a mailing, which doesn't seem like much till we deal with thousands of mailings in a year, a couple thousand in a year. But also, just on these minor nuisances, the tall grass and weeds and junk and trash, we get more complaints that we're not doing things fast enough or getting to those items in a timely manner, and we still want to provide notice through that orange placard on the door that we're going to continue to do, and do our best to make sure owners or residents are notified. We don't want to clean up abatements because we know that takes more time on our end and is a hassle for staff and the owner and resident, so we want to make sure they have every opportunity to do that on their own.
So, it's logical, I think you're going to knock on the door when you put the placard on and see if there's someone home you can talk to, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Shahean? I understand you want a letter, but the placard on the door, I mean, you're not going to miss that one. Come on, come on in.
I'm just talking in reference to absentee owners. There are some neighbors that go south through the winter, and they don't come back till mid-April. There's been times when the grass can get pretty lengthy. It didn't happen this year, but, and I'm sure they have a forwarding address and should be given that opportunity.
But on a situation like that, all we're going to do is cut the grass. Nothing's going to be taken. We're just going to, we're just going to take that tall grass and move it.
Pretty expensive.
I'm just saying, when people move, they know that grass keeps growing.
Well, I'm not saying move. I'm saying they're going for the winter.
Well, if people go on vacation, they know that grass keeps growing. You know what I'm saying? I mean, you want us to protect your money, Leon. That's what you want us to do. You bark at me when we don't, to your satisfaction. Here we are trying to save, now you just heard the, you just heard the logic behind that. $3 plus for, you know, it could be up to thousands, you know. I'm okay with it. I'm just saying, I'm okay with the, as long as we do the placard, I'm okay with that because really there's not many other, there's not very many other scenarios that somebody wouldn't be prepared to do. To me, it's a shock when somebody says that they've left their property for a large amount of time and they're shocked or surprised that somebody had to cut the grass or do something for it.
Well, here's another example of what happened in our neighborhood, and I actually had to call inspections. They were putting a placard on the door. The home was in foreclosure. There was nobody to home. And it'd been a lot, a lot easier if you'd done the research, called the bank and tell them to do something about it. Because when the city had somebody come after and trim the grass, it looked worse after the grass was done than before.
I would seriously doubt that.
Yes, it did. It was pretty bad.
I'm not going to argue with you about that right now, Leon. I'll talk to you about that after the meeting, though.
But I'm just saying, I think it's a good idea in all cases. That's $4,000 well spent. I complain about a lot of the money that gets spent, but that's 4,000 well spent.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the audience? I see none. You've all been lovely tonight, everybody except for Leon Shayhan. I want that documented for the record. All right. Counsel, we good?
I would just say, I hope we're not cutting the grass in the winter.
Well said, Mr. Rinker. Well said. Okay. Kathleen.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have a motion for final adoption of an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Burlington, by creating a new chapter 100, Stormwater Management and Drainage Systems Utility.
Second.
City manager, Assistant City Manager, Nick McGregor.
Oh. I want to come up here because it's going to be behind me, so that way I can talk and look at the same time. We'll just go over the same PowerPoint that we've gone over for the last five or six weeks. This ordinance is repealing our current chapter 100 ordinance that has a stormwater utility. The stormwater utility that is currently in place is pretty basic. Every year, by resolution, we set the rates. This new ordinance would set the formula for the methodology in the ordinance and then every year we would set the ERU rate by ord, or by resolution. Give the next slide for me. So this is our current fee structure that's set by resolution. We actually did this back in March, knowing that we would be trying to change the formula, but the residential unit is not changing. But as you can see, we have two different units for residential and then we have four different impervious surface categories for commercial and industrial. The ERU methodology would break that down even further. If you'd go down to the next slide. So the ERU or the equivalent residential unit is determined by finding an average impervious surface area. And when I say impervious surface, concrete, roof space, anything hard surface that won't let water penetrate into. That is 3,360 square feet. That is then applied to all the commercial, residential or multi-residential and industrial. The dollar figure for that ERU rate is $2.58 as of July 1. So as you can see in Iowa, ranges for ERUs are from $1 to $6. Give the next slide for me. This is a breakdown of number of properties. You can see ag, commercial, industrial, the number of properties that fall into that category. The average monthly bill on what those properties see is off to the right and you can see that the residential, the residential is from when we were doing the study, so it still says 250, but it should be 258 moving forward. If you'd go to the next slide for me. And this is a breakdown of our current, the biggest thing is, is the residential isn't changing, so single-family residential won't see a change from the previous structure to the current structure or the, what will be the current structure. The commercial, industrial, multifamily is where the changes will happen. The applied of the impervious surface will still be relatively the same idea, but it's just the amount of units that it's broken up into. Previously, we had four different categories. Now we'll have, you know, essentially thousands of different categories that the properties will fall under as far as what their ERU structure is. So you can see out to the left, the impervious square footage and then kind of the correlation to what the bill will be underneath the ERU method. Give it the next slide. This is an, this is just a snippet of how impervious surface is calculated and then the bill that correlates. When we hired Vintor Kim to do the study, they went through and they calculated all the impervious surface using aerials. So not 100% accurate, understood on that, but they went through and they calculated all the impervious surface for parcels. So they're based off the parcel. There's still some logistics that we have to do to break down parcels that maybe have more than one meter service to that property. And that's the end of it. I can answer any questions. I've went over this several times, but I kind of get lost in the minutia of going through it over and over again, so. Any questions?
Let's not get you too lost in the minutia, my friend. Let's start with the audience. Anybody from the audience has any questions or concerns about the minutia that he just got us all lost in? I see none. Counsel?
No. Been through it, what, six times now?
A lot of minutia. Okay. We're good? Kathleen.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Okay. Resolution.
Your Honor, I have a resolution amending stormwater utility system fees pursuant to chapter 100.7 of the Burlington City Code.
Second.
Assistant City Manager, City Manager, Nick McGregor.
The, this resolution will set the RU rate that we had previously just talked about. It was not on the work session as far as a resolution listed in the agenda, but we did discuss it when we talked about the ordinance change. So all this resolution does is set that ERU rate that had already been previously set. So this is just doing it underneath the current code system that we have just, we just set.
Right on. Right on. Anybody from the audience, questions or concerns? I see none. You guys have been lovely tonight. Counsel? Kathleen, let's vote.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Okay. Number two.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 HMA overlay project.
Mr. McGregor.
I need a second.
Second.
Second. Thanks, Wilson. The resolution in front of you would award contract to W.L. Miller in the amount of 579,835. The amount bid is a little bit over the estimate. As you can see at the bottom, we are funding this through our annual GAO bonds in the amount of 1.4 million. We planned on doing some concrete work adjacent with the asphalt work. With Agency Street, a little overbid and then these numbers coming in, we backed off a little bit on what our concrete costs were. This, this project, I foresee maybe a little bit of ability to do some change orders on since we have a quantity price, to do a little extra asphalt work since we still have the budget of 1.4 million. I've discussed it with Jim on how we're going to continue on with the work, but I would recommend awarding bid to W.L. Miller.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel?
Nope.
Let's vote. Kathleen.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Your Honor, I have a resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Seal Coat Street Reconstruction.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, both.
This resolution in front of you would award for the 2018 Seal Coat. The resolution in front of you currently says awarding amount in the amount of 348,000 and change. It was dialed back when we initially saw the budget and then the dollar figures that came in after discussing it with Jim. There's an amendment in front of you to award for the full amount. In the previous year, we did not expend the full amount for Seal Coat work. We have the ability to cover the full costs, to be able to knock out quite a bit of roads and.
Knock it out.
If you would go to the next slide, it shows you a map of all the Seal Coat roads will be taken on this, in this, in the full award project. So we'd be, we actually got into some out-year roads with this project because we felt that the pricing was pretty, pretty on as of last year. Unfortunately, that didn't come in the way that we had planned on, so that's why we backed it out. But my recommendation would be to amount, award amount in the, in the full amount.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the audience, concerns? I see none. Counsel?
I have a motion to amend, to amend the resolution awarding contract for the 2018 Seal Coat Street Reconstruction by amending the contract award amount to the full amount of 425,743.73 to W.L. Miller.
Give you a second.
Second.
Okay. Let's vote on the amendment.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Okay. Now let's vote as amended.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along.
Your Honor, I have a resolution of support and financial commitment for the Main Street program in the City of Burlington, Iowa.
Give you a second.
Second.
Thank you, both. There he is.
Steve Freyver, this time Executive Director of Downtown Partners. I gave my kind of annual report at the work session last week, so I don't really need to intend to go over any of that unless you have questions, but this is for the three-way agreement between IEDA, Main Street, Iowa, Downtown Partners and the City of Burlington. A few changes from the last time, two years ago. This one is an 18-month agreement. From here on out, it will be a 12-month agreement. It used to be that the city and Main Street were parties together. Now they've separated out those, so it's kind of a three-party agreement.
And that makes, was the purpose of that, less or more paperwork?
I think, yeah, I would hope so. I think it just kind of spells out the obligations on each party's behalf.
Just want to make sure if there's anybody coming on the back end. Are there any questions or concerns from anybody from the audience? I see none. Thank you, sir. Counsel, are we good?
We're good.
Yes.
Kathleen, let's do this.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
All right. Number five.
Your Honor, I have a resolution waiving the building permit fees for the Greater Burlington Area Sports Facilities, projects adjacent to the Recplex and permitting a delay of compliance with select building requirements.
Give you a second.
Second.
Thank you. There he is. Doctor.
Good evening. Michael Ash. I'm here representing the Greater Burlington Sports Facility Board and as we shared with you in work session, the last couple of work sessions, we're attempting to put together a project near and across the street from the Recplex and would be located on the Greater Burlington partnership property. And in our Monday discussion last week, there was concern expressed by Councilman Phillips about the parking, and so we went back to the drawing board and we indeed were able to move the building a little further east, creating space on the west for that parking. We showed that drawing to John and so we made the adjustments. I think we were looking for or looking to have happen, so we're making this request.
Okay. Anybody from the audience, questions or concerns? Okay. Counsel?
But this is for waiving the building permit fees, right?
Yeah, that's would include, building, that should include building, electrical, plumbing, all those other, just based on the $4 million project, the building permit fee would be 36,000 and then estimated up to another thousand for electrical, plumbing, mechanical, could be less than that, but for the $4 million project, it would be 36,000. Those funds go into the general fund.
Right on. Right on.
Okay. Thank you, Eric.
You guys good?
Yes.
All right. Let's vote on it.
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambo.
Aye.
Rinker.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Okay. Number six.
Your Honor.
Stay right there.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving shared parking space for the Greater Burlington Area Sports Facilities, projects adjacent to the Recplex and permitting a delay of compliance with the required parking spaces on site.
Second.
Doctor.
Yes, we will continue our conversation with Eric and others at the city related to parking, parking requirements, and we are working with the city on a shared agreement so that some of the parking will happen in the Recplex complex and part of it will happen at the turf building. And we believe our understanding, our guidance has been that if we are able to have a shared agreement, that we will be able to meet the building code requirements.
Questions or concerns from the audience? Oh, did you have something?
Yeah. So this agreement specifically would authorize approval by the council for that shared parking. Chapter 170.30.505 of Burlington City Code specifies how much the parking required for each facility and that up to 50% of the required spaces may be shared on adjacent property provided approval is given by that property owner and the city being the property owner, it requires council approval for that agreement. Based on the occupancy of 560 estimated, our code requires the occupancy divided by four, 140 spaces total required by code as a minimum for the facility. So with the 50% shared, it would require 70 onsite and 70 on the Recplex facility site. So those could be, on the Recplex side, could be met by this agreement. This does talk about developing a mutual access and maintenance agreement for the respective parking lots in the future as well, just as far as use and maintenance of those facilities so that it's agreed upon that when those can be used by the other parties and who's responsible for maintenance. But this agreement specifically authorizes that 50% reduction in parking to be used on the Recplex side for this facility. This agreement also talks about the $500,000 contribution. This is the point on that. I can put up a map here. So there's some estimated, or cost estimates with this. I guess the language within the resolution says, "Council does hereby approve the expenditure of up to 500,000 for the construction of additional parking and other horizontal infrastructure at the outdoor Recplex, the construction of connecting sidewalks between the existing outdoor and the new indoor turf facility, and the construction of additional parking at the new indoor facility in a manner to satisfy all code requirements at a minimum." The amount of parking constructed at the new facility will meet the minimum standards, but will be expanded as funding allows within the $500,000 allocated to the overall project. And the parking and sidewalk layouts shall be constructed generally in conformity with the park design layout, which is shown here. So based on that, the cost estimates as completed by the city engineer, this area, find here, area E is Recplex parking, and I'm going to have to, is approximately $120,000 for this area shaded in gray, which would be additional parking on the east side of the Recplex.
Say that again, but.
The area shaded in gray with the additional turnaround and then the parking on the east side of the Recplex would be approximately 49 spaces and 120,000. The area in yellow is area B and that would be approximately 98 spaces and that is 361,000 for that portion of parking. The area dashed here, not highlighted, is the area that was discussed by the sports facility as being constructed with the project. That includes, I think, seven or eight handicap parking spaces. There in red is a future road extension that has been discussed as an extension by the city. And then there's areas in blue and green are other alternates for parking at a cost of two hundred and eighty, two hundred and eighty thousand for the area in blue and eighty-four thousand for the area in green, which would both be above, I guess, let's kind of give you a breakdown of what the options are for that five hundred thousand dollar expenditure. But the resolution states that it can be any of these options with the area on the Recplex side, the area in yellow being the closest proximity, the sidewalk connections, and then these areas on the south side exceeding that five hundred thousand if those first two options are considered.
And when we sat down and did this, we could have dissected the parking into thousands of different sections. When we discussed with the staff, we figured that Section B, if we were going to go up to a five hundred thousand dollar threshold, Section B or the yellow was one of the more logical ones because it fit with the flow of the rest of it. We also, as staff, liked the addition on to the east side of our current parking structure at the Recplex. Because of the ease, you already have the travel lane created, and then creating essentially the parking stalls, which I think ninety-eight and forty-seven, or forty-nine would be one hundred and forty-seven spots roughly created at about a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar cost. So those seemed the most logical to us when we sat down and played it through. But we have options up there. I guess we could come up with more, but you know, this is what made the most sense to us when we sat down and looked at it.
And then obviously, if costs come in under, there are additional options to expand that, those areas further.
Okay. Questions or concerns from the audience?
Chris Repke, thirteen oh six Madison Avenue. I guess this is a little bit of sour grapes, I'll admit that. But last meeting, you turned down, you couldn't said you had, you couldn't turn down four hundred something thousand dollars to keep parking on Madison Avenue. Now you're going to give five hundred thousand dollars to put parking spaces in the Recplex, which just puts more burdens on the taxpayers, because really, that's where the money is going to come from. And I say, you know, everything's fine except take out the five hundred thousand dollars, the city contribution to the parking. Because again, you're not adding value to the neighborhoods of the city. You need to save money up to start adding value to the neighborhoods rather than something outside of the neighborhoods that might draw people in, and yes, might draw money in, but it's not going to the neighborhoods that definitely need the help in the city. They're more on the downhill side rather than the uphill side. There's more development, I've talked to the syrup, syrup I always call it, Southeast Iowa Regional Planning, I mentioned that there's more development outside in the county rather than in the city for housing. It's something that needs to be reversed, and five hundred thousand dollars for parking needs, that money really needs to be put into all the neighborhoods of the city rather than into parking and putting more burden on the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Okay, thank you, Christopher. Counsel?
So right now, we're planning at a minimum to do the Area E and Area B, correct?
I don't think that that's not necessarily decided upon in the passing of this resolution. I think that in there discusses the ability to work that out. It's initially, right now, is the contribution of half a million dollars.
Whose ability? Do we work that out, or are they going to work it out?
Well, I don't know that answer. I mean...
Probably more them than, more them than us, I would think.
Well, and we had some discussion on whether or not this was a city-built project or simply give the funds to the indoor Turf facility to add on to the parking there, you know, what makes the most sense. But Jim wrote the resolution. I mean, it talks about a half a million dollar contribution to infrastructure, parking specific mostly.
Okay, so this is just for the transfer?
This is to keep it go, yeah, this is to keep it moving, right? Pretty much.
I think this specifies that the council is willing to give that five hundred thousand dollars, and we need to then identify, are these the best options, or are there something else?
I mean, at some point in time, they're going to have to come to us with plans, right?
We, and we have some plans, but I guess, are these satisfactory to both parties as far as parking options? And is council willing to commit that five hundred thousand when we can come to an agreement on what those exact specifications are? So.
Okay.
Like this agreement allows the shared parking between the Recplex and the indoor facility to reduce their parking needs, which would then allow them to receive their building permit based on code, and then authorizes council to contribute up to five hundred thousand to a parking arrangement that's satisfactory to both parties.
Okay. Well, and also to, just to underscore the notion that there's already a parking issue at the Recplex.
Yeah.
So the parking, this additional parking would be shared with the Recplex activity, so it would help to begin to address some of the parking issues at the Recplex. So it isn't just one-sided here related to the Turf. It's a shared effort.
And discussion with Kirk Danforth at the Recplex, the parking usage and needs are further south here where this facility is being built. The area north of the existing parking lot is used a few times a year on the major tournaments, but overall, people will come and park in this grass area before they can park in this paved area to the north here. So felt that these options on the east side of the parking area and where the Turf facility is located were the best options rather than doing any paving north of that existing parking lot, so.
Good? All right, thank you, sir. Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
No.
Brinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
No.
Okay, number seven.
Your Honor, I have a resolution approving access agreements from the temporary graveling of an extension of Broadway Street for the Greater Burlington Area Sports Facilities projects adjacent to the Recplex and permitting a delay of compliance with required roadway construction standards.
Second.
So right now, the Broadway Street ends just past the drive, or the parking lot entrance into the Recplex. The facility would like to construct the indoor facility. I think it probably start construction prior to any work being done on Broadway. Per our code requirements, they do have to have a paved driveway entrance, but this would authorize that they would be able to have a temporary gravel drive within city right away from the end of the Broadway Street as it's constructed now. It'd be treated as a private drive access for them, being maintained by them until such time as the city constructs the city, the street, and then it would become a public street with that construction.
And as far as the timing thing goes with the Broadway extension, the full project was not budgeted until 2020. And trying to, you want to show the breakdown of the roads there? The RISE grant application, in discussing it with the DOT, and opening up multiple entrances into a property, you're less likely to get something funded if there's two entrances created. And so we would go after a RISE grant for just the southern, the east-west road, the unnamed road, and that would be a RISE grant application. But if you were to create, if you were to build the road prior to gumming down Broadway as an extension, you would put the RISE grant application at jeopardy of trying to do that. So you try and do it kind of simultaneously, but to try and do one in advance of the other one, or Broadway in front, in advance of the RISE grant, would put that application in jeopardy. So that's kind of the reason for this resolution, to allow access off of, I mean, it created essentially a private drive off of something that's in the public right away.
But we're not jeopardizing that at this point. The grant?
No.
Okay.
Questions or concerns from the audience? I see none. Counsel? Good?
Yep.
Kathleen?
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Brinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have appointments. Right, so we got...
Right, and it's both appointments, one resolution.
Okay.
Well, the first one was in the consent agenda, wasn't it?
No, it's just one resolution. He pulled the whole, you can't just pull the resolution.
So I said it wrong.
Okay. Appointments, Airport Authority, Elizabeth Van Black Sally, and Low-Rent Housing Agency, Edward Prill. Mr. Moos?
I need it introduced and seconded.
Oh, okay. I have two appointments, one for the Airport Authority, Elizabeth Van Black Sally, and Low-Rent Housing Agency, Edward Prill.
Second?
Second.
There you go. Okay, there you go. Now, Mr. Moos?
Well, first of all, thank you for letting me address you. Probably don't very often get somebody come up and want to be passionate about one of the committees that you appoint, but I have been very passionate and have been a long committee member, authorized board member of the, first of all, the Burlington Airport when it was still under your jurisdiction. Helped very much in getting it to be an authority between the Des Moines County and West Burlington and Burlington when Mike Salamon was the airport manager. And I was initially on the board when it became the Southeast Iowa Regional Airport. I did leave it for a period of time because of work obligations, and then was asked to get back on. Was influential in bringing Mary Beard on. I will rag you a little bit about that because I think she does an excellent job. I begged her to be a clerical to Sharon Liebert, knowing that Sharon was probably going to exit at that time. Also been very involved in the change of Air Choice One from Great Lakes, the FBO from our older FBO, Lack of Services, to Jet Air. I interviewed and went and almost drug them over here for services that we needed as the airport. With all this said, I'm not going to keep boring you. I did list my qualifications for that board. Pilot, and a pilot's in nineteen eighty-six, but that's just a very little bit, a small amount that we even do, and very seldom do pilot issues come up out at the board. So I learned that I was no longer, that my time had expired, and then normally when that happened, I was just, as the other members, had been asked by Mary, do we want to continue serving or not? And I said, yes, I certainly do. And that's when I learned that there was a strong possibility that somebody else was going to be appointed in my place. It is a five-member board. You may or may not know, and I would defer to somebody maybe a little more, you know, information, but as Iowa, I think it's nineteen seventy-eight rule, as an authority, it has to be a five-member board. And that's the E twenty-eight agreement, and I wish I knew a little bit more about it, but I think I understand it. You simply can't add somebody to the board because of that code that exists for an authority. I did make copies of that and have them here with me if you'd like to look at that. So with that said, I would at least like to, if it's appropriate, at least like to provide you with my history, my qualifications. I will tell you that we're getting ready to spend or oversee over ten million dollars worth of construction projects out there the next couple of years. Runway eighteen thirty-six, as you should know because of your budget issues, eighteen thirty-six has to be replaced completely. Our, we've started that preliminary engineering with McClure Engineering and have done core samples. And because of my experience with concrete, I am an ACI engineer, American Concrete Institute member, as well as International Concrete Restoration Institute member. You can read all that if you want to, but I would like to at least oversee this project as a board member. Now with that said, certainly there's going to be an engineering service there, but as we all know, that's not perfect either. And I think in the past, as we have one right now, some of my input has been very appreciated on some of the issues that have happened over there on the facility side of the airport. So with that said, I would be happy to answer any questions or comments.
One quick question. The roster right now only highlights three different members, John Scholes, Charles Walsh, and then yourself.
Yes.
It's a five-person board, so if we'd be adding one person on, is there a reason why?
The other two members are the city, the city of West Burlington, Mick Fletcher, and the other one is Dan Weidemeyer, represents the county.
Okay, he's not on this list, that's why.
Yeah. Dan Weidemeyer's been on the board for self-study, and wonderful person to have because of his connections at the Iowa DOT.
So how many are on the board right now?
Five.
Three appointed by us.
Three appointed by the City of Burlington.
Okay, here's...
Are they all men?
If it appeases you, I do have that information.
Yeah, you can bring that information, but I've got something I want to give you too, that you can have.
Just to clarify, those are all men listed as members of the board?
Yes, we are.
For the commission?
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, the first few pages are just my history, and then you can turn the pages, three pages to the left.
So I just want to, I know your accomplishments and what everybody says about how valuable you are, that sort of thing, and I want to reiterate that, yes, I did, I did give that information that you've been a benefit to the board. The only reason why this is coming up is because, is because your term has come to an end. Otherwise, and honestly, if nobody would have come, if nobody would have applied for that board, it wouldn't even be an option. Now, this I do want to read because this is part of the, part of the reason why this has to be done. That's Iowa Code, Section sixty-nine point one-six A, it's a gender balance. It's all appointed boards, commissions, committees, and councils of the state established by the code. If not otherwise provided by law, shall be gender balanced. No person shall be appointed or reappointed to any board, commission, committee, or council established by, established, appointed or reappointed to any board, commission, committee, or council established by the code, if that appointment or reappointment would cause the number of members of the board, commission, committee, or council of one gender to be greater than one-half of the membership of the board, commission, committee, or council plus one if the board, commission, committee, or council is composed of an odd number of members. You get the point. The bottom line is, we, there are no women on that board. This supersedes all my feelings about how good of a job that you did and all of that good stuff. There's no getting around this. And the reason why I said this, my first thought was, I thought there were three people on the board. I was willing to say, all right, well, we'll bring this person in, and then we'll just change the ordinance. I thought there was three. I didn't realize that there were five people on that board, because I was definitely willing to have the ordinance changed just for your expertise, because it is highly, highly spoken of. But that being said, this is, this is Iowa code. This is something that you don't grapple with, and if we, if we do ignore this, as a matter of fact, if I'm, if I'm correct, what we're supposed to do is, we're supposed to wait for even up to ninety days. Am I correct on that, Kathleen? That we would have to wait up to ninety days to see if another, if a woman would...
Right, three months, uh-huh, ninety days.
But...
It says all appointed, let me finish reading this, and you guys can see, because, because again, this is, it's not a personal deal. All appointed boards, commissions, committees, and councils of a political subdivision of the state that are established by the code, if not otherwise provided by law, shall be gender balanced as provided by Subjection One, unless the political subdivision has made a good faith effort to appoint a qualified person to fill a vacancy on a board. We're supposed to do this. Commission, committee, or council. Nobody went after this person, she just applied on her own, though. It says, "To fill a vacancy on a board, commission, committee, or council in compliance with Section Number One." It says, "In complying with the requirements of this subsection, political subdivisions shall utilize a fair and unbiased method of selecting the best qualified applicants." Where did I skip over? I missed that.
Don't miss that first, that part.
With subsection one for a period of three months that has been able to comply. We're spoken, yeah, not only, I, I'm not saying that this is the best route, and I understand what you're saying, because I had a conversation with you, and you are the talent. There's no doubt about that.
Well, first of all, what is the penalty?
What is the...
What would be the penalty? I mean, what I don't understand is, the fact is that you are kind of saying to me now, okay, you might be the better candidate, but you go get to sit on the bench here because you're not a female. And I understand that there should be equality for things, but the fact is, I think you still would want to try to put the best person on any of your boards that you have that opportunity. She did apply for other boards. She checked several on there. I think one of them was the library and a number of things. I'm not saying that that's appropriate, but the fact is, apparently, that particular board, the airport commission, is not just her only interest there. I would like to stay on the board, and I will leave you with this thought and then get off my high horse about that. But if you look at Burlington, the most valuable two-mile stretch of concrete is at airport runways. Runway eighteen thirty-six, twelve twenty, or twelve thirty, I'm sorry. And the fact that when somebody comes here who's going to spend a substantial amount of money in our community, I'm not talking about personal money, I'm talking about economical welfare of that community, of our community. They don't come by train, they don't come by car, they sure don't come by boat or bus. They come into that airport. And I, that's why I've been so passionate about it, because it's not just me as a pilot, it's me as a citizen of this area who wants to make sure we have that airport. I'll give you one more example, and then I'm done. Our president, President Trump, whether you like him or not, when he flew in here, we had to tell him, no, you can't fly a particular plane in here because we can't support your plane. We now are making an effort, and I'm trying to push that very much, that we have a nine-and-a-half-inch concrete runway, so we can now support larger planes coming in here, especially every four years when we have political candidates who want to fly in here. Many of them go to the Quad Cities, Cedar Rapids, and then they'll drive down. I want them here. We are lucky enough, President Trump just said, oh, I'll bring the smaller one. Well, it did reduce his entourage too, which maybe that was nice. But I do think, I do have a little bit of reason to want to stay on that board and pretty passionate about it, so. But that, no, let it go, unless somebody else has any questions.
Questions?
I do have a question, not, not for you, but about how many boards a specific person can serve on at the same time. I don't know if anybody...
I don't think there's a limit.
Is there any limit? Because she's already on a board.
That's what I'm thinking. If she has a willingness to join an alternate board, would she be happy with that?
She's already on the economic development board.
Because maybe that would satisfy her, and then you could continue to serve. I would hate to lose your talent. We need you here.
There's two, there's two big issues that I see with just what's in front of us today is the fact that in, in the code reads qualified persons. Well, I don't have the ability to measure this lady's qualifications versus... to measure this lady's qualifications versus Dwight's because I don't have any of her information in front of me. I see the appointment packet, and it's listed in the packet. She may just be as well-qualified. I'd like to think that we're appointing people to these boards based off of their qualifications and their merits, not the color of their skin or, or their gender. I understand the goal to try and be more balanced when it comes to these boards, but we do got to make sure that these people, I mean, I, if, if the gentleman has an advanced experience in whether it's concrete, or the things that he's in, if we can use that, I prefer to see us go that direction. I would suggest that we postpone this to the next meeting, have an opportunity for this lady to provide, whether we want to ask for a resume or some list of qualifications so that we can compare the two, as we probably should with any two people competing for one particular spot on any board, whether it's the rearfront advisory committee, or it's the housing standards appeals board, or the airport authority. That's where I'm at.
Mr. Rinker, it, on the application, it does ask for your qualifications, and I know she listed that-
Yep.
-her father and her brother might have been a pilot or something like that.
But the, the application isn't in my packet.
Okay, this I, this I do want, I do want to say before we go forward, and I'm, I'm satisfied with that, I guess, but the bottom line is, this, this still has to be looked at, this still needs to be met, it's never been met on that board.
But it does, does say qualified.
I understand that, but, I understand that, but again, that's, that's all, who's making the call on who's qualified, and I will say this again. You, you guys know where I stand, I don't like people being locked out, and I'm not saying that's what you're trying to do, but, but that's what happens when somebody's been on a board for a while, and then somebody wants to take a look at it and, and go into it. I realize how important you are to that board, I realize all the stuff that you did, but at one point in time, you weren't on that board, there was somebody else on the board that had to step away for you to get on the board so that we could see how much talent that you had. So I'm saying, to me, I never like anything that looks like we're locking somebody out, and, you know, everybody gets a term, that's what happens at the end of a term, that it's not a guarantee that, you know, no matter how much talent you've got.
And I was-
The only problem is the citizens don't get to vote on this one, so.
We're the ones that dictate how this will go.
We're the ones that dictate this, and I, you know, I, I'm sure she's qualified and appreciate her spirit. By the same token, I, I, my personal opinion, since we're going to vote on this here pretty quickly, is we shouldn't ever throw a talented, committed individual out because their term is up, and, and if they wish to, we don't have to go through the learning process again, you know, to, to, to get where that's at, and, you know, I understand there's gender balance and all, and that, and I'm not, we've got balance here, I'm not saying that that's not important, but that shouldn't be the only criteria, and that's what I'm hearing, well, we have to comply with this, well, okay, what, you said, what's the penalty if we don't comply? I-
I agree, John, and I know that there is some newer people on the aviation board right now, and they are struggling. There is a tremendous learning curve, and I fear that if we allow another new person on, again, they're going to struggle, and is that the best benefit for Burlington?
Let this lady start happy that we're not allowing her to be on this board.
That's why, that's why my suggestion was, is let's postpone this week and allow her an opportunity to at least-
We're, that's getting postponed, that goes without saying, but I'm just saying that's-
I think it, it, the, the code reads gender neutrality and balance, but it also, it also screams qualifications as well, so it's listed in there multiple times.
So maybe this would be something we would ask, so.
I don't see any, oversee any boards here, but gender balance becomes an issue across the state for boards that are very heavily favored in one gender for the, over the other. The one thing I would caution you towards is gender balance is important because it could open yourselves up for lawsuit. If there's a, if there is a qualified candidate, in your eyes, I'm not going to interpret that, that is of one gender, that you need to fill that role.
Right, and I think what, I think what Matt said-
And so I just offer caution in, in following what state code says as far as board appointments, so.
And I think what Matt said, though, Nick, and appreciate that, but I think what Matt said is important to me, I haven't seen her qualifications, it's not in my packet, and so I can't really make that decision without seeing it. I don't, I don't know who has looked at the, the appointment.
Nor do I.
And so until we have that information, I'm not willing to, to vote on it. And I'd be making the same suggestion if that was a woman sitting there or a man, regardless. Yep. If we've got a, a, a board that has five women on it, and, and a man decides that he wants to apply for it, I'm not going to be in favor of just appointing him simply because he happens to be a man, and we're going to balance out the board. So I want to make sure that when we're appointing people to committees, that if there's, if there's openings on the committee and no one has interest, and somebody's willing to volunteer for that, obviously, great, let's get them on, get some experience, but when there's multiple people interested in one seat, it's important to make sure that we're taking those qualifications into consideration. But, and like I said, I can't make that judgment tonight because I don't have any of Elizabeth's information.
We just, we just need to be careful as well, again, and, okay, let's, let's not, let's not labor with this, Kathleen.
So do I, do we need to make a motion?
Well, I think maybe make a motion, I think someone should make a motion to remove the airport authority from the resolution, so that way you can still vote on low-rent housing agency.
So I'll make a motion that we-
Thank you, Council Mayor.
That we remove airport authority from the resolution and postpone it to June, the June fourth city council meeting.
Give me a second.
Sorry.
Okay, this is on the motion to amend.
Right on. Can I still ask a question?
Okay.
Okay. My question would be, this falls on us. There's still, West Burlington and the county are nominating people as well, so I, I guess I, I-
Well, it would, it would-
Well, they, they appoint people, it's a five-person board.
It would be, if, if they should have happened to have somebody's term expire, they would be in the same situation.
Yeah, so, so from now on, from now on, when we have these committees come up, I would like a breakdown of the length of term, who's on it, and their qualifications, because this is going to, if that's the case, this should come up every time on every commission that we have.
John, the other comment I'd make is, we've got, we put three board members on there, we are always going to have a gender-owned balance on our end, because we've only got three people. We're either going to have two men and a woman, or, or-
It calls that out.
Yeah, but that is-
I have a feeling we've kind of filled some of these from time to time, just because we have an opening. Well, I, that shouldn't be the way we do business.
May I, may I address you a minute, Mayor? In the fact that I have researched the equality, gender equality thing, and I believe if you read that closely, yours, all three entities are supposed to collaborate in regard to gender equality. It isn't up to just you as a city council of Burlington, it is all three, if I remember the subsection reading of that.
It's the political subdivision that's created.
It is to be gender balanced, yeah.
Right on, right on.
Okay. So anyway, sorry.
And that's the part two of this.
So let's vote on-
Let's go ahead. That's right, we're going to vote on the amendment.
Which removes the airport authority.
Right on. Kathleen?
Phillips.
Aye.
Graham Murray.
Aye.
McCambeau.
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, now let's vote as amended.
Okay, with this, the low-rent housing.
Right on.
Phillips?
Aye.
Graham Murray?
Aye.
McCambeau?
Aye.
Rinker?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, we'll come back to this. You've got to appreciate passion. All right, we're coming to a close. Mr. Tisland, you've got nothing to say on those tired legs of yours? All righty then. Kathleen?
Do you want anybody else to add anything?
You know what? That's good stuff. Let's start with Mr. Shanahan.
How can you help?
Because you're here, my friend, because you're here.
Leon Shanahan, eighteen twenty-one Mal Pleasant Street. I want to address something that's not on the agenda, obviously, and that's the proposal for the new-fangled garbage cans and pickup. I've got lots of problems with what's being proposed. First of all, the city did a survey, people are opposed to it. That should be quite a barrier right from the start. My concern there is, by having bigger garbage cans, you can kiss recycling goodbye. The reason we have the bag and tag after your first trash bag or trash can is to encourage recycling. I think we need to stay with recycling. Now, I'm not totally in favor of the curbside recycling as it exists, but I certainly support recycling. It's just ridiculous to dig up, for instance, raw iron ore and turn it into steel when there's plenty of steel cans from every household in the city. And I'm really surprised how Morton at Area Recyclers hasn't been to visit you, because he is certainly passionate about recycling.
Right on.
Next item, as slow as the proposed equipment is, I fear you're going to have to hire additional staff. Now, I've watched, you know, some people complain about city workers, well, the sanitation crew, they really hustle.
They do hustle.
And, and I don't know how, and I've seen the packways and whatnot, I don't know how they can compete with the sanitation staff. You're going to have to hire more workers to do this. It's going to be counterproductive from that point. This equipment is going to be expensive, that means more debt. You've got more than enough debt on the books and off the books, we don't need to incur any more. I've heard that, well, it'll reduce workmen's compensation claims. Nobody's told or stated what the workman's comp claims are in relationship to how we're doing it versus how much money it's going to cost, and I know things like that are hard on workers, I worked on railroad when I was a young man, and I'm paying the price now, but I think we need a real number for the workman comp claims for the sanitation crew as opposed to how much money we're going to spend. Example, many years ago, the city proposed a sidewalk ordinance that everybody's going to have to go through and redo their sidewalk, and it's going to save the city fifty thousand dollars a year liability claim. Why ask a simple question at that time? How many claims have you had, how much had it cost the city? It was six hundred dollars, not fifty thousand. So you really need to look at the numbers before you go spending what will perhaps be hundreds of thousands, if not a million dollars, on new equipment. Second, there are another point is, thirty-three-gallon cans are not the reason Burlington is trashy. Burlington's trashy because you've got trashy wages. You spent money subsidizing employers, Flint Cliffs got money from the city of Burlington, and they cut wages. You gave money to Case, they've cut wages. You gave money to Champion, they cut wages. You gave money to G E, they cut wages. You gave money to Dresser-Rand, now Siemens, they cut wages and they're leaving town. When you have, when you cut people's wages, you hurt people's ability, they're demoralized. Trashy wages makes a ghetto, not the size of a garbage can. And lastly, you're talking about taller garbage cans. We have lots of wind, especially this time of year. There's a good chance those things will get dumped over, and you'll have a bigger mess than what you already have. At that, I'll, I'll let you be so you can adjourn, but I, I really am opposed to the mechanical trash collection.
I'll address a couple things, where my thoughts are.
Actually, we-
Can I?
No.
Not really allowed to at this time.
Well, I can't lecture back.
Yeah, correct. Thank you for-
Show our work session.
But-
But you can't after the meeting.
Okay.
But I'd really like to see a lot more analysis on this, and especially since the people of Burlington don't want it. You know, let's support recycling.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to comment on that.
Yes.
I'm Kathleen John, twenty-six oh-four Fennel's Drive. You did a survey, they said no, that should be the end of it. You shouldn't still be debating it. I didn't get a survey, plus, that's the other thing, is not everyone got a survey.
I didn't get one.
So you don't really have the yes or no's. Most of them have been no's, so that should be the end of it. It shouldn't still be on the front page of the Hawkeye about they're still debating the garbage cans. If people said no, let it go, go on to something else.
Thank you.
Freddie Starling, five seventeen South Seventh Street, Burlington, Iowa, and I'm just here tonight to give praise and thank city council, city Burlington, for the beautiful shelter house that is in Gladys White and Dearborn White Park. Thank you. I believe we have eliminated trying to put up makeshift tents sitting in the sun by you putting this shelter house up, and also eliminating when you hook up three or four cookers, you have to go back and try to hit the breakers and all of that, try to keep your food warm. And after all, this is just one day, and you know the reason for this day, and I, I feel like tonight that also we should be exempt from everything. But anyway, thank you, thank you. I looked at the, the electricity, and I believe we have plenty of power down there. Thank you, Eric. We appreciate you, thank you very much, I just wanted to come down and thank you, and I want to put another shout out for our chief.
Thank you, chief.
I think the last time I was here was a little misunderstanding about what I said, and that weren't what I meant, so we got that straight. I, I believe in, if I say something publicly, I think I should come back and, and make sure that it be corrected because it was a misunderstanding, so I thank you tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just have another comment, just because I know you guys have already discussed this.
You say your name and address.
Kathleen John, twenty-six oh-four Fennel's Drive. I know you guys have already discussed this, and it's over, I just want to tell you, stop spending our money. This was worth, this was, I went online, found chairs for fifty bucks, I want-
For what, what was that? Which one are you saying?
Captain chairs. I went online, I wouldn't even look at, but I went, but I just want to say, stop spending our money. This is not, you're not here for comfort, you're here to decide. Well, I'm not saying you shouldn't be comfortable, but a hundred and ninety dollars a chair, that's a little, and-
That's a good price, all right.
Just stop spending our money. There's three new council members because they didn't like the old council, when the next time, there might be more new council members.
Hopefully so.
I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Doctor.
Michael Ash, twenty-nine thirty-four Woodland Drive here in Burlington. I just want to say thank you for your support and for your guidance, and for the opportunity to be able to work out some arrangements and understanding, so thank you very much, and I think we'll do you proud, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? Okay.
Kathleen, you got nothing?
All right.
Just want to thank everyone that participated in the Great River Bridge Run last Saturday. It felt like I was running in a microwave oven that was on, it was extremely hot, but we took the race up, up, raised the bar, and I'm happy. We had ice-cold water at the end, great finisher medals, ice-cold adult beverages at the end, great band, so come and check us out next year, we're, we're taking your suggestions to heart, it's even going to be bigger and, and better than ever before, so, thank you everyone that participated in that, all the volunteers, everybody, fun time, thanks.
I, I, I got a, I got a little thing coming on. Wednesday-
Open those up.
I am opening them up. Wednesday, eleven to one, Drive-by Community Field, Sturzings, as anybody's been following, had to change their oil, which changed the taste of their tip, their chip, and so they had a, a problem where there was a little bit of a public relations, they brought in a food scientist, the bag still tears wide open. So we sampled them today, and, and they're inviting the public to Drive-by Community Field, eleven to one, on Wednesday, sample the chips, give the feedback, this is an iconic Burlington employer, and they're, they're, they're not just saying, well, lump it, they're, they're trying to make sure that this chip is, Burlington chip, iconic chip, is protected and the same thing you've always wanted, so please stop by and give them some feedback.
As a dietitian, I think these chips are better than ever before, so I give them two thumbs up. Pass that back.
So it's not a commercial plug, but it's a plug about an employer, so.
But they are pretty tasty.
All right. We approach it.
Absolutely. So, of course, the-
Farmers market has started.
Yes, man, she's got, she's got beef against me.
Snake Alley Criterion this weekend. Get out there for that, it's amazing to see those bikers ride up Snake Alley. I know it's hard to even run it, run up it from the...
We walk?
Yeah, that too.
And citizens can, citizens can sign up still at six laps. I tried to talk that down to about one or two, but told me that, uh, the rules state you have to do six minimum.
Um, we also have, uh, the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast on Saturday. Get out there and support that. Who doesn't love pancakes? I do. So, it's, you know, good cause. Get out there, eat a bunch of pancakes, um, and then go watch bikes or go around and around. It's pretty crazy. And that is all I have.
Yeah, standing on Snake Alley is really cool. If you've never done it, it's a bucket list item.
It is, it is.
Council Rinker?
Who won, Eric, you or Jim?
Jim.
Did he? By a lot or a little?
A fair amount.
It was by enough.
Fair amount?
They both got me.
Okay, all right.
Um, just a reminder, I won't be here the next two weeks. I'll be calling in on the phone, so anybody here in two weeks will get to listen to my voice, but I won't be here. My wife and I and kids are going to England tomorrow, so that'll be good. Kudos to Burlington Fire Department. I just did a twenty-four hour ride along with them the other day. Went in at seven AM. I had to break away because I got called away for jury duty. That was kinda weird. And then I went back, we did, uh, there was twenty-four calls that day and it was everything from medicals to, to save the guy in a bucket truck and, uh, some other crazy stuff. It was all fun until you went to bed and you get woken up at various times in the middle of the night. Uh, four times to be exact, uh, to go take care of business. So, I commend them for what they do, it was definitely an eye-opening experience. I would encourage, actually, I would challenge each and every one of you sitting up here to do the exact same thing.
I commend you for doing that with the new baby and you're not getting any sleep as it is.
Because it, it's, it's one thing to go and spend a couple of hours and maybe go on a couple of different ride-alongs, but it's a completely different thing to sit there and watch them all work, whether they're working on reports or, uh, they're inventorying the ambulance or even just understanding the frequency by which they have to go do things. So, uh, I definitely learned, or have a whole new appreciation and perspective for what they do. Uh, somebody asked me the other day if I was gonna do a solid waste ride-along. I don't know if I will, uh, but that could be interesting.
Sure.
Tanner's, Tanner's done it.
Tanner does it all.
Other than that, that's it.
Mike McGregor?
The only thing I would add tonight is, is as you may have noticed or experienced, uh, Agency Street east of Roosevelt has become quite congested with the, the restrictions on left-hand turns and the restriction in lanes. This will go on for approximately about five to six months, so strap in.
Just wanna, uh, we did have a Great River Bridge Run this weekend, um, saw many people down there, it was great. Stoker was there, uh, she ran it, she does everything. So anyways, uh, we're just impressed with you, you're all over the place. Uh, Mayor Prochett was there, helped pass out medals. It was really, uh, it was just a fun event, it really was. Linda Graham Murray ran it, she was there getting her sweat on and all that good stuff. Uh, Eric Tisland, uh, I was really impressed with how you were running. You didn't cheat like our city manager did, but we'll talk about him later. But it was just a, it was just a, it was a fun event, it really was. And it was, uh, big, I just wanna give a shout out also to, uh, Tabitha Gerdner and Katie Music who, uh, put a lot of hard work in. And anybody else that I'm forgetting, um, I just wanna say touche. It was, it was awesome. Uh, Tom Walls was there letting off the big loud cannon when everyone, when nobody was expecting. So, uh, yeah, that was crazy, but it was, it was awesome.